Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the May 1st meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask our clerk to call the role to determine our quorum.
Mr. Alderman Weigle.
Here.
Barzak.
Here.
Shapleski.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Frankie.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
All nine present.
We have a quorum. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Weigle.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we will move on to item D on our agendas, which are public hearings. We have four of them this evening. I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the interim city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of South 85th Street from West Arthur Avenue to West Hayes Place, West Hayes Place from South 85th Street to South 87th Place, West Arthur Place from South 85th Street to South 87th Place, South 87th Place from West Hayes Place to West Arthur Place, South 88th Street from West Arthur Place to West Cleveland Avenue, and portions of intersecting streets by concrete pavement repair and utility adjustments.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Okay, as he, as the clerk said, this is the public hearing for 85th, 87th, 88th, Arthur, and Hayes. Here's the procedures for tonight. I will discuss the project, the scope and the costs. I'll discuss the assessment rates and then methods of pavement. And there'll be comments and questions from the Common Council. And then there'll be a time of questions from citizens affected. And then the public hearing will be closed, and the project will be referred to the Public Works Committee for a discussion and vote. And then it will come back here probably tonight for a final decision by the Common Council, the full Common Council. So here's the streets we're talking about, this loop up here from Hayes and Arthur, and then ADA Street. These streets were somewhat worse than the other streets, so we wanted to attack these first. Here's some pictures from 85th Street. The concrete curb and gutter, in this case, was put in in 1964. So the street has lasted 54 years, which is a very long time. It's definitely longer than most last. But the pavement is severely cracked and potholed at this point. Here's some pictures from ADA Street. Routine maintenance is becoming very difficult and expensive to have crews come out and fill this all in with asphalt every year. And likewise over here, this ADA Street was actually built in 1961. So that's actually 57 years old, which is bordering on probably a record. Here's Hayes Place, also 1964, 54 years old, lots of potholes. And Arthur Place as well, 1964, lots of potholes to be filled there. So the project will include the removal of all those deteriorated places that you saw. We'll put in new concrete pavement. There's some curb and gutter that probably looks like that too, that would be replaced as well. We would install, like I said, the new sections of concrete curb and gutter and pavement. The street will remain open at all times. We'll work on one side, and then we'll work on the other side so that cars can get through. Instead of waiting for this pavement to deteriorate so badly that it would have to be completely reconstructed, we decided we would do this method, which is the cheapest thing for everybody. We can patch it. It'll look like new. It'll last at least 10 years. I would argue it would probably last a lot longer. If we were to reconstruct all those streets listed, it would be over a million dollars. And the residents would have to pay $59 per foot instead of the $11 per foot that we're charging you for this. If we were to resurface this with asphalt, it would, it would be $640,000, and we would have to charge $39 per foot to resurface with asphalt. So patching like this is only $11.85 per foot for the residents, and it's only costing the city $277,000. And the street will last, you know, like I said, at least 10 years, if not much longer, before we would get back to that. So this is what it'll look like. It'll be, it'll still be a concrete street. You'll be able to see where the patches are initially, but those will fade, so you won't even be able to tell where they are. We'll just take out all those bad spots where the concrete is, got potholes, and we'll put new concrete in. Overall, I think the street is still in good shape. It's not, it's not a lost cause, which is why we're recommending this type of a treatment. Project will include several sustainability benefits. So we'll use 100% recycled crushed concrete from old pavements. Instead of mining for new gravel, we'll use recycled flash from coal electric plants in the concrete instead of mining for new cement. And we're not using any asphalt. Well, there might be a few small places, but that would also be recycled as well. But for the most part, it's going to be all concrete. So the cost, like I said, of the pavement is $277,000. We're going to just do a little bit of sanitary sewer work, a little bit of storm sewer work, a little bit of water main work, but not a lot of utility work. So the total cost of the project is actually $370,000. And this is how it's being paid for. So 54% of it, $199,000, is coming from the general fund, which is a citywide property tax. We're getting, the little bit that we're doing for the water main is coming from the water utility, which is a citywide fee that everyone pays. That's 12%. There's a little bit of storm sewer work, probably some manholes that we're working on. That also is a citywide fee that comes, it's on your water bill. And then the sanitary sewer, there's just a few things we have to do. That's also a citywide fee. That's 3%. And then the special assessments will be $77,000. That's 21% of the total. So here's a sample special assessment. Assuming you have a 50-foot lot times $11.85, it's very simple, comes out to $592. These, the pieces of mail that you got in the past few weeks, that was not a bill. The bills would not be mailed out until March of 2019, so a year from now, less, less than a year from now. At that point, then you would have payment options of paying a lump sum, paying it on a five-year installment plan, or paying it on a 10-year installment plan. So if you actually choose or chose the 10-year installment plan, you wouldn't actually have any payments for 20 months until December of 2019 if you chose that 10-year plan. And if you did choose the 10-year plan, assuming 4% interest, the first payment in December of 2019 would be $83, and your 10th payment in 2028 would be $62 for the whole year. There are several properties, because of the loop, that are corner properties, are probably paying for more than one side. That's not unusual. 10,000 parcels out of the 19,000 parcels in the city do pay for more than one side of their property. So that's 55% of the residents. Of that, 3,400 are paying for more than one street, that's 17%, and then 7,400 are paying for their street and their alley. So that's 38%. So here's how we, we work the discount. If you have two sides, we take the longer side, which is probably about 120 feet, multiplied by the same $11.85, that comes to $1,400. But then we take 60% off, 60% discount. We subtract $853, leaving you with the $568 cost. Here's kind of why, or the history of why we've been special assessing. We've been doing it for over 100 years. In the old days, residents actually paid 100% of the cost of the new street in front of their house because they're enjoying the unique benefit of this improvement because they live there and they, and that's their property. But on this particular project, as I said, the city's only collecting $77,000, which is 21% of the total cost. Assessment rate is $11.85 for all residential properties anywhere in the city, no matter how wide your street is, or how high the traffic volumes are, or how high the actual bid prices are. Everyone is treated equally. Everyone pays $11.85 to the penny. So therefore, everyone is treating, treated the same. For over 100 years, Wisconsin state law has allowed for special assessments. And there have been actually over 100 court cases in Wisconsin where judges have upheld this law as a fair and reasonable method to recoup the cost. So this method has certainly stood the test of time. Special assessments are the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities, railroads, all pay their fair share too. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though 430 properties in the city do not pay any property taxes. And many of these tax-exempt schools, churches, hospitals, county parks are very large properties that encompass actually 28% of the total land area in the city. And they only contribute to the city's costs through special assessments. So that's one reason why we do it. Businesses, corporations, and manufacturers pay a higher assessment rate to ensure they contribute their fair share. Their assessment rate is $14 to $17 per foot. And by way of example, on this job, the Word of Grace Bible Church on ADA Street is paying $2,000 in special assessments, even though they do not pay any property taxes because they are a church. So here's, all the shaded areas are all those prop, 430 properties, tax-exempt properties in the city. The total 28% of our land area. And special assessments are often the only funds that they are paying to the city. In this map, all the shaded areas are people who have paid a special assessment in the last 10 years. So on the east end of town, it's almost everyone. Here's your neighborhood. There have been assessments, I think, for sidewalks throughout the years. So everyone is paying their fair share. Everyone is being assessed. Everyone's paying the same assessment rate. So everyone is being treated the same. And it's not uncommon in Wisconsin, most of the medium to large cities in Wisconsin are special assessing, from Janesville to Madison to McQuanico to Wausau. They're all, these are all cities that are special assessing for streets. If you included special assessments for sewer and water, I would say it would almost get to 100% of the cities are, are using that method to recoup their costs. As far as the interest rate, the 4% interest rate, the city borrows the money for this project. So the city is actually paying municipal bondholders over the next 10 years. So the city is merely passing along these interest charges to the residents that choose the five or 10-year payment plan. The city does not make a profit off the interest, but it's just a way to keep it fair with the people who are paying right away. So that is the reason for the interest. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Daniels. Are there any questions from the Common Council? Seeing none from the Common Council, are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? If there are, please use the podium and give us your name and address for our record. And please sign in either before or after your comments.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Morozak. I live at 2449 South 85th Street. I have several pictures here on an iPad. In 2012, the road was replaced in front, total concrete replacement was done in front of my house and the houses across the street. The differential was, on the south side of my house, was seventeen, or I'm sorry, 17 feet, no, 13 feet from the lot line to where the new concrete starts. I have pictures of the new concrete. And at the north end, from the corner of my lot line to the corner of the house, air, there is a seven-foot differential. 20 feet, and yet still the charge for, I'm getting charged for the entire length of the 163 feet. And I know I'm getting a discount of 40, of the 40% discount because of the, or 40% cost, 60% discount because of the fact that my lot isn't that deep there, because it's a double lot. But when it comes down to the total of both sides, it's still coming up to like $1,500. And I do understand what the city engineer said. I do understand that their assessment needs to be done. But I don't, what I don't understand is the fact that the road was replaced six years ago in that particular area, the whole road, and maybe some curb work does need to be done. Why can't I receive either a deeper discount for my property, or what, what would be the option on that particular situation? That's what I'm, I'm looking at.
We're treating everyone the same. I'm not, some people might not have as many potholes in front of their house as other people, but we're treating everyone the same. I'm not guaranteeing that we're going to do two potholes in front of everybody's house. So I guess in the, in the interest of equity, you probably do have a patch in front of your house that was done. I don't know, was there a water main break or something? You got lucky there. But we're treating everyone the same. You know, some people might not have a pothole directly in front of their house, but we're treating everyone the same because you all used the street to get to your house.
That's correct. I do understand that. And I can understand the fair play aspect of this particular project. I was, I was, that was one of the things that was a question in my mind. But thank you very much for answering that, Mr. Engineer. But I, I see what you're going to do, and I have some of the pictures, as well as some of the pictures that you've shown up there from some of the bad spots. You've got a 55-year-old road on, in front of my street. And you're, I realize that we're going to patch it with concrete, and hopefully those patches hold. But knowing the, knowing the weather and the things in Wisconsin, I think we may be throwing good money after bad. But that's beside the point. Anyhow, thank you very much for your time, members of the Common Council, honorable mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have comments or questions on public hearing number one?
Hi, I'm Connie Hustler, 2529 South ADA Street. I understand that ADA Street is a thoroughfare, where it's mostly heavily traveled traffic. And do you give any special assessments to the thoroughfares?
Everyone is treated, even if you lived on Lincoln Avenue, you'd be paying $11 a foot. So we don't, like I said, we don't treat anyone differently because of more traffic, less traffic. The busier streets are thicker, so they last longer. And your street has lasted an exceptionally long time. So I don't think anyone can argue that they're getting short-changed on the assessment they paid in 1961 because it's lasted a long time. And, you know, I don't think there's a lot of, you know, there's probably a few trucks from the hospital that wander down that way. But it doesn't seem to have hurt your street because it's lasted 55, 57 years. So, but we treat everyone the same. If you lived on Lincoln, you'd be paying the same, even though you have 15,000 cars in front of your street. So we don't treat anyone differently. You're not being punished because you live on a busier street or a less busy street. You're being treated equally. And it's only 20% of the cost. Whereas if you lived on Lincoln, the $11 maybe would only be 3% of the cost because Lincoln is so expensive. But at least everyone is being treated the same. Everyone's paying $11.85. So we can't argue that someone's
I'm not arguing, I'm just asking, you know, just asking, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I saw another hand.
Tom Horstmeier, 8629 West Arthur Place. As I got from the information up there, is it, you're not doing the whole, you're not turning, just patch
We'll saw, wherever you saw one of those potholes, we'll saw it on each side, and we'll put new concrete in there with tie bars and
What about driveway approaches?
We're not getting into, if, sometimes if the curb in front of your driveway is in particular bad shape, we might do a little bit of your driveway, but we're not looking to do driveways at this time.
Okay. I was wondering if the, the sinkholes, you know, where the sinkhole
We're going to fix that, that'll be
Initiate this a little bit?
No, no, we actually had this planned last year and it got postponed. And then the sinkhole came. So we will fix the, fix the sinkhole as part of this.
I noticed that, you know, your description here of the street doesn't have that little section from 87, 87th Place to 88th. It's not described here, but I saw it on the map.
Yeah, yeah, it's included, it's included.
So, and only curbs, the curbs only where it needs to be?
If it's got potholes in it or badly cracked. I mean, if a slab just has one crack in it, that's, that's not really, not really hurting anything. We're probably not going to take the whole slab out because it's got one crack. But if it has two or three cracks, and if it's got asphalt, you know, pothole mix filled in there, we're going to probably take care of that.
Two days ago, or maybe, no, it was yesterday, I guess, a city truck came through, and I thought they were looking at my, you know, curb debris and whatever. But they were checking for, they had rat, I didn't know they had rat poison right down in our, but I guess they, you know, I was standing right there. They said it hadn't been affected, and they put a new thing down. But is that, is that what you do before?
We do, we do, right.
Oh, okay.
But we're, even though in this case, we're not really doing any sewer work, it would be more of an issue if we were taking the sewer out and
Okay. And that, the, the pothole, I mean, the sinkhole, that wasn't a bad sewer then?
It was a water main break that
Water main washed it out.
Kind of liquefied the soil underneath and
So the sewers are pretty good there.
That was all repaired the night that it, it broke, and the sewers were fine. I could see them, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Does anybody else have comments or questions on public hearing number one?
My name is Richard Steinborn. Live at 8630 West Arthur Place. I've owned a few places in my time, mostly in the city of Milwaukee. But this is the first time that I've been assessed for road repair. And this, we're talking about 20-some places I have owned in the past. Have you charged, I came in late, so I apologize, but have you charged for road repair in the past?
For 100 years, over 100 years. And Milwaukee has too, until recently.
No, they haven't.
They did, until recently. Yes, I know they do.
The last time I ever got charged for any type of repair was sidewalks because of a tree root overgrowing.
I've never worked for Milwaukee, but I had been told they had always special assessed, as do most large cities, Madison, Green Bay, Racine.
That's what you've been told.
Wow. That is our policy.
If they haven't, then would we not be not charged then?
No.
If, if, you know, if you're, if you've been told that, you know, something wrong?
See, for 100 years, it's been to do special assessments. So it's irrelevant
Assessments in sidewalks, yes.
And streets. We've, we've always done streets, and sewers, and water main.
And what streets have you done? And can you show, can you show us?
Every, that was that map. Every single street in the city has been special assessed over the past 100 years. Every single street. There's never been a street that hasn't been in, in 100 years. So, some, most people are paying their second or third time around on the east end, paying for their alley, paying for their street. Yeah, there's never been a street that has not been special assessed.
What's property taxes used for then?
Well, that's the other 60% that is
Why aren't, just, why don't we, why aren't we just paying for, why isn't everybody paying for that once? Why isn't everybody paying for
Well, that's why I explained that a lot of properties don't pay property taxes. And this is a way to spread the, spread the cost out
Because the churches and nonprofits.
Spread the cost out to more properties to reduce the cost for everybody. If it were all on the tax roll, it would only be 72% of the people that were paying for the streets. This way, 100% of the people are paying for their street. So we're spreading the cost out to everyone, keeping it lower for everyone.
I don't have to believe you, do I?
(laughing)
And I don't.
Okay.
Does anybody else have comments or questions or doubt for our public hearing? You can, you can start if you want.
Trying to be respectful on him.
Oh.
Evening. Just with all due respect
Can we have, I'm sorry, can we have your name and address, please?
Last name's First Path, last Han, 8619 West Arthur Place. With all due respect, I understand our streets are respectfully decent, and that they've lasted, what, 60-some years. And I noticed this, in Hayes, they completely redid the whole entire street. I don't know if it was worse than ours.
That was a McAdam Street? That was just gravel and tar? That was a totally different, it wasn't a, it was not a concrete street?
But they redid the whole entire street?
Right, right. And they paid $59 per foot.
I understand that. But if our street's this bad, and you say this is going to last for 10 years
It'll last longer.
Wouldn't it make more logical sense to redo the whole kick and caboodle, make it last another 50 years?
We, we will get to that point probably in 15 or 20 years, but I don't think we need to do that now.
I understand that.
And we can save maintenance costs by having crews come out and fill the potholes every year this way. And I think you've got some really good concrete on that street, as evidenced by the fact that it's lasted 55 years. It just seemed a shame to rip it all out if just 15% of it's, you know, in bad shape. So if we replace the bad parts, I think the street will last well over 10, 15, maybe 20 years.
I'm by no means doubting that. But it just makes more sense, and I'm grateful that you're doing it. But it just makes more sense if you redo the whole kick and caboodle and let it last for 50 more years instead of having to come out every 10 years to replace it.
Well, we'd have to spend a million dollars then. We, we simply don't have the funds, the city doesn't have the funds to do that right now.
But doesn't it cost more money for the maintenance crew to come out every five, 10 years to replace potholes or whatever compared to doing it once every 50 years?
This is cheaper in the long run than, than redoing the whole thing.
So the property, the people that own property have to pay taxes, pay it again twice, 10, 15, 20 years from now again?
It will be, it'll be much cheaper this time than what I'm, than the $59. So.
And how much is this going to inconvenience us as far as traveling back and forth on the roads?
It'll be, it'll be open at all times, but it will be an inconvenience. You'll have to avoid the barrels. It'll probably go for a couple of months because they'll do one side, and then they'll do the other side. But the road will be open. That's another thing. If we were to reconstruct the road, you would be out of your driveways for two to three months. And we would do all the sewer and all the water main, and it would be a very long process. So this is much easier from that point of view as well.
I fully comprehend that. But it's, it just makes more sense just to, respectfully, if it's, like I said, if it's been 60 years and it's been this, just to redo the whole kick and caboodle. I mean, then it lasts, like I said, and then in my thinking, it lasts another 50 years. You guys don't have to spend as much money coming out every five, 10 years to paying all the people for the maintenance and the trucks and all the services, potholes?
Well, if we fix the patches, we won't have to do much maintenance for 10 years. That's what I'm saying, is we won't have to have someone come out for 10 years and do that.
When is this project expected to start?
July, August, September will be the timeframe. You'll get a letter before they start warning you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on public hearing number one?
Go.
Yeah.
Because I came in late. I was going to ask, are you going to be doing lateral inspections?
No, no, we're not doing hardly any sewer work on this. It's just about the pavement.
And can somebody maybe inform us, I might be the only one.
And can somebody maybe inform us, I might be the only one, but, you know, bear with me, as far as the lateral insurance?
We...
He had gotten something.
We didn't, we didn't do that. Yeah, the city didn't, opted not to do that. We don't have lateral insurance.
There is no lateral insurance, no private nor public?
No. Well, I don't know, private, but not public, no. Not through the city. No.
Any other questions or comments?
There's one more.
My name is Renee Bowdre and I live at twenty-five sixty South ADA Street. I just have a question for you about how you're assessing the math kind of on this. I was reviewing your slides when you had brought it up, and I have my letter you had mailed me. And in there, you were commenting on a hundred and twenty-foot property was, the total would be five hundred and sixty-three dollars. I'm not understanding the math maybe because I'm getting an eight hundred and twenty-nine dollar bill and I have a seventy-foot lean. So could you please explain that a little bit more?
It's just seventy times eleven.
So how come mine is eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and that property was a hundred and twenty?
That was just a typical, you have a wider lot than your neighbors, apparently. You have a seventy-foot lot? You have a double lot, really. You must have a double lot, seventy feet wide.
So was that, were those just hypothetical numbers up on your slide?
Yes, those were hypothetical.
Okay.
Everyone's lot is different. Some people's forty-five, fifty, sixty.
I was just understanding your math. It was saying eleven eighty-five per square foot times a hundred and twenty dollars, or a hundred and twenty feet. And then the discount, and that was, so is that the discount then?
Discount is if you're on the corner. You're on a corner?
No, I'm not.
Okay, then you don't get the discount. The discount is just for people that are on the corner with two sides. They get one side discount, one side full price. So you're just paying the eleven dollars and eighty-five cents times seventy-foot lot, which is essentially a double lot. That's why your bill is a little bit higher than the average bill.
All right, thank you.
Because you have more land.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
We will.
Good evening. Mark Oliver, eighty-six twenty-nine West Hayes Place. I guess I have more comments than questions. This has been eye-opening. Never really been privy to exactly how government is run and decisions are made, so I appreciate the opportunity to the open forum. As a tax-paying citizen, it's a little bit disheartening to think that over the course of fifty-seven or sixty-two or sixty-one or sixty-four, in a, you know, almost miraculous situation, taxes have been paid, accrued, assigned to multiple other city expenses, and we're, you know, it's nearly a miracle the street has lasted this long, but now there is an individual special assessment to make it right when it's an expected repair. As I said, it's more of a comment. I wasn't aware that assessments were so regular and longstanding. I also didn't realize that West Alice was a medium or large city, but I've learned many things tonight. It is also slightly disheartening that after paying all of our taxes, the government is then borrowing money to do these projects that clearly weren't planned or budgeted for, making a taxpayer wonder where all those dollars for sixty-four years have gone. So, you know, you're welcome to speak to any of those comments, but I guess I just wanted to make those thoughts and feelings known. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on public hearing number one? Okay, seeing none, we will close our first public hearing. And I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Resolution relative to determination of special use permit for Natty Oaks to create an outdoor recreational and dining area at one-one-five-zero-five West National Avenue. Tax key numbers five-two-zero-nine-nine-seven-four-zero-zero-one and five-two-zero-one-zero-zero-eight-zero-zero-zero.
Thank you. Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proposal is for outdoor dining at the Natty Oaks property. Its own C four, its permitted use as a special use, that's the purpose of the public hearing this evening. The hours of the outdoor area, they have two actually, outdoor areas, as can be seen from this photograph. They're going to be putting on this lawn area, and those hours of operation will be studied through all week, ten to ten. Twenty-five parking spaces are required. They won't be able to have twenty-seven. One of the purposes of this is to have, allow pets to be able to come and dine with the patrons. It's kind of a lawn atmosphere is what they're trying to go for, kind of a connectivity between the River Parkway and the rest of the neighborhood. We looked at the possibility of putting fencing up, but that would kind of detract from what the objective is. And it probably wouldn't look really good on that busy of a street to have fencing. So we've, the staff has not recommended that. They'll also be installing garbage cans and dog cleaning stations and putting out some additional tables. They had a special use permit to do this last year, and it worked very well. That's why they want to put it now on a more permanent basis. The plan commission has reviewed this project and has made several additional recommendations, including asking for more details on a variety of issues, including dog waste stations and refuge areas and those kinds of things. And then even the potential of a hatch area between the dining area and the grassy area to make sure the pedestrians have a safe way to go from one to the other. And then also, because it's two lots, we want to combine both the lots that they have here to do that. The plan commission has reviewed this project and recommended approval. If you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I'm in favor of this in general, but I have some specific questions. So currently, there's a licensed premise described on their liquor application that shows probably the interior of the building and the outdoor patio area as it is right now. Now, we're going to be adding through the special use, an extension to their alcohol premises for that green space. Is that contiguous with the current licensed area? And if it's not, I'm pretty sure it needs to be. You can't take drinks from one licensed premises to a different license. It'd be off the premises. Because the parking lot, I assume, is not currently licensed?
The extension of premises is going to come before the common council on May fifteenth. You are absolutely correct. That is a special issue that still needs to be dealt with. It's just as the owner will have to get a state waiver to allow pets to be in the serving area. There's some other issues they're still going to have to deal with as related to alcohol.
Because, you know, I would have, I'd have a bunch of questions that go to the plan of operation. Would customers be allowed to buy drinks in the bar and walk across the parking lot and consume them on that grassy area? Or would it be waitress or waiter table service only, like I've seen other cities in other states where, in that area? Would the licensee be allowed to, I've also seen in our, in southeastern Wisconsin, a place where they have an extended area and then, okay, if you're there for, well, in this case, it was snow tubing, if you pay a certain fee, they leave a half barrel of beer tap for everybody to essentially self-serve. You know, would there be any actual service? Would a portable bar be set up there at all? And I wouldn't have a problem with that. I just want everybody to know what we're approving here. And I also do have a concern about the lack of a fence. I'm not sure how a customer's going to know that he's not allowed to walk onto that sidewalk with a drink in his hand if we allow the extension of premises. Wouldn't have to be an eight-foot fence or a six-foot fence. It could be, you know, something simple and reasonable, you know. I do remember we had an extension of premises in the third district some time ago, and the requirements that were put on that particular property ended up costing that guy like forty grand to do the work that was required of him. It was a much smaller space, and he decided it was worth it, and I believe it probably has been for him. I just think if, this is the one time that we have a chance to get what I think we want there. Once this extension and this special use is granted, and we look back and go, well, why didn't we ask for more landscaping? Why didn't we ask for some sort of fencing if that's what we need? I'm not saying there can't be gates in the fence, but, you know...
Currently, there is some landscaping, some bushes that are around the perimeter there.
I did a site visit this afternoon.
As they grow, that'll act as a barrier or a psychological barrier to, hopefully to the patrons to know that they can't be leaving and walking on the sidewalk in the public domain. The other questions that you asked are specifically to alcohol, and that will be taken up May fifteenth. All those will be answered by license and health committee, ultimately the common council.
So this, the beverage alcohol side of this will go to license and health committee?
That's correct.
Okay. I guess I'm happy then. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from
the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
John, how often have we offered or had a, one special use permit granted for, to cover two properties?
This is two parcels today. Is going to be, as part of this approval process, will be required them to combine them.
I guess, what I'm familiar with in other communities is that if you're going to have a special use permit, you put it all, you put all the properties into one. Alderman Barzak and myself have had a issue with a property in our district that has five separate properties operating under different special use permits, and it's been a nightmare for our building inspection and development departments to enforce because it gets extremely confusing. And I understand we're giving them one year, but why are we giving them the one year? Why wouldn't we just require it right away, take care of some of these licensing issues? Why the one-year extension?
Only because we typically do that on something like these conditions that are, can't be accomplished immediately. However, it certainly wouldn't be out of line to require them to do it within a month or two months or before occupancy or whatever.
How long does it take to get a CSM?
It takes approval, they have to, have an engineer do the plans. It has to go through the plan commission, then it'll be approved by the common council. Then it has to be recorded. It'll probably take about a sixty-day, sixty to eighty-day.
Does it say about two months? Maybe we should require it to be done in three months then. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Other person, Ranky.
John, I have a compliment, basically. The business has been very successful compared to the previous businesses, and actually, it has been a boon for the neighborhood from what I can observe. I've only been in there once to a meeting in the lower level, and I'm totally impressed with the business plan that you have currently. However, I do have reservations about this added addition. It's somewhat the entrance to our city. I mean, there's a few blocks before, but it is a focal point
Right.
for that particular area, national and Oklahoma. And I'm wondering if possibly we had thought of landscaping for this particular area. That would enhance, obviously, the lot that you have planned to put the tables. Right now, it's bare bones. You just put a bunch of tables and have, you might say, the horseshoe
Sure.
elements there. However, I do think it could be enhanced further if we had some landscaping on this particular lot to shield maybe the people that will be using the picnic tables.
That, we've already started to address this past fall. We have roughly, I think we're right around twenty, twenty-five shrubs. It's called a dappled willow shrub. It can grow from four to eight feet. Our objective is to have that at a four-foot berm all the way from where the national Oklahoma corner is to go all the way to our Oklahoma Avenue entrance. Because we agree with you, we, the sight of looking at these tables and of these horseshoe pits is something that we know that we are like, kind of the beginning of West Alice from the west side, western side. So we have begun to address that. And again, I apologize that we didn't bring that to you in the forefront, but when we did the special use permit last year for the West Alice Wolves, we recognized all the things that were the benefit for that event, but we also recognized the issues that we could see for our site to keep the city looking good. Because, like you said, we are doing successful there, but we're also doing successful because of the support we're getting from the city. And we are pleased, I hate to say that, other than, other, any other way than to saying that the community has accepted us. And we have continued to try to keep that as a very clean and quiet location, and that is our objective, and that's why we've chosen, like I said, it's called a dappled willow shrub. They're growing tight enough, so that'll be a way to stop the people from coming in. We intend to put a sign up that says beverages are not allowed past this point. So that's going to be addressed. We will have this dog cleaning station because we did receive the notification for the special permit for the state. So we are aware of that, and that's kind of the objective, so I was glad to receive that. We have been trying to look forward to it, not just as a business, but a local community resource. We know that we have people walking in the area, but we also know we have people in the area that want to drive by this and not be embarrassed by something that just could be technically a bar. We want it to be a restaurant that you all can be proud of that we're part of the city, so...
It's an excellent location, and to me, it would enhance the business more.
Sure. I'd be more than happy to show you the pictures of what we're, what the shrubbery will look like.
Right.
It is a flowering shrub, so it will have fresh green, green and white, to be honest, I even have them in my own home. That's why the decision was made, because we could see how they had grown over the period of, actually, a very short period of time, of three years now, so...
Do you plan on having umbrellas or tents effect?
No tents. There will be umbrellas on top of the picnic tables just for the sun. I know there was a question about the dogs earlier. This is a dog-only, and again, that is stated here by the Department of Health within the state of Wisconsin. This is a dog-only event. Dogs will have to be leashed or harnessed at all times. So there is no question, we are not making this a dog park. We're making this a dog-friendly area for the customers that walk through the parkway and actually have asked us numerous times to have the dogs on our concrete patio, which, for me, as someone who serves food, I'm not comfortable with that. But this is able to follow the state regulations. We can make this where people who have asked us numerous times, and like I said, walk through those parkways almost daily, we just wanted them to have something, you know, and at the same time, we thought, why wouldn't it be fun to make it picnic-like with the horseshoes and the bean bags out there? But we are never grilling food out there, and we are never serving alcohol from the location. We can serve them from inside. We can have waitresses. We are going to make a crosswalk, so the waitresses will be safe. We intend to make everyone, from you guys to our customers, happy, and at the same time, you know, it's meant to be something fun for West Alice. In our opinion, it's something to be fun and new and different. We knew you guys had looked at having a dog park just down the road, two blocks west of us. I can't remember the name of the street. We knew that was a consideration, but we also know how many neighbors are coming over and asking us, can we bring our dogs on the patios? We have a sign that says no pets on the patio. We will not back from that, but we just thought this would be a fun way and a, kind of a community involvement way of making our neighbors happy and seeing if we can still continue to give them good food and service at the same time, so...
So do you plan, and I'm sorry for the conversation,
I'm sorry.
Do you plan on having food and drinks served at the tables?
That was our objective, yes. That, again, they were going to have a service that was there. If we don't have it through the week, there is a paging system that the consumer will know that their food is ready individually. They will not be allowed to come in with the dogs or anything. We are, you know, like anything, we're, we want to make sure that we can serve them within reason, but we are not going to break any standards of rules, especially pertaining to health and food safety. But we are not going to have any tent events. My intention has never been a tent event. It's just to be another greenfield park type of picnic area that we are taking care of customers and letting them have a good time in our location.
Thank you.
Yep, my pleasure.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, except Alderman Barzak?
My suggestion may be not to vote on this tonight, to hold this and let the liquor portion be worked out for...
We vote on this part of it?
We will probably do that, Alderman Barzak. I think we'll let the committee decide that.
Very good. All right, thanks, Tom.
Any other questions from the council? Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number two. Excuse me. I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number three.
Resolution relative to determination of a special use permit for Coast Car Wash LLC to establish a vehicle wash facility on vacant property formerly AMF Bowling located at one-zero-nine-zero-one West Lapham Street.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A car wash is permitted, your C three Zoid district has a special use, and that's the purpose of the public hearing this evening. The plan is to demolish the existing bowling alley and to construct a five-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot car wash, about one-point-three, one-point-eight...
car wash, about 1.3, 1.8 acres, and then about the three acres left will be for other uses, and I'll talk about that in a minute. For parking, seven parking spaces would be required, technically, they're providing 23. Hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., then about four employees at the site at all times, and there'll be vacuums at, up to 30 vacuums on the property. This is the picture of the property here. This building will be demolished, and then the car wash will be constructed on this site, and then another use, and I'll talk about that in a minute, would be on that site. The existing ingress and egress are noted in these areas here. They will be changed primarily to avoid the fire department entrance and to accommodate the development, but in consultation with the fire department, I think we're very happy with where we can relocate those. The one on Highway 100, there's still a traffic study being, the traffic study has been conducted and submitted to the city, and the city has submitted it to the state, and we're still waiting for the state to respond to that study. So we'll not be recommending any action happen tonight or until such time as we get the state's review of the traffic study. The proposed car wash would be located on the Highway 100 site. Future development will be located like this. We have a prospective gas station, convenience store, quite a high-end type of use. They have not submitted formal plans, so we don't want to review who is looking at it, but because it's a gas station, it has a lot of traffic impacts, and we require the car wash to take the future development plans into consideration when they develop their plans. Technically, we'll have about 4,100 new vehicle trips per day in this site. More likely, technically, it's actually about 4,800, but most of the trips that are coming in and out are going to be what they call a late traffic, where you're going to go to the grocery store, then stop and get your car washed, or you're just passing by and you, oh, I want to get my car washed, or get gas. So that's why we're looking at 830 vehicles a day at prime time on a week, on a Saturday, and 280 at peak time during the week. So it'll be 900 vehicles a day for the car wash, 3,500 for the convenience store or gas station. The entire site will be demolished, tore up, and rebuilt. Extensive amounts of landscaping will be installed as part of this process. The biggest change that we made with the developer was at one point in time, they have their vacuum cleaners on this side of the building, on the east, west side of the building. They had proposed to put them on the east side, and we said that's not putting our best face forward, and they were very good about changing that direction. We're also taking a look at stacking of vehicles. That's very important, because we don't want vehicles from a car wash or for any business to stack in the street. And so that's why we require a lot of vehicles stacking. We're also, right down there, about 60 vehicles can be stacked onsite at any one particular time, and we also asked them to add this other lane in here for another 10 vehicles, so we could probably accommodate somewhere about the 70 vehicles stacking at any one time. According to traffic study, there's a 95% probability that you're probably only going to have 24 to 48, but we want to make sure that we have more than enough capacity. Also, as part of the special use, the owner would be prohibited to have customers parking, stacking in the street, violation of that could technically be revocation to special use. So they'll have to manage that process as best they can, just as they manage, if they get too many cars coming through the car wash, they can do one carve in four minutes. If they don't have enough spaces to have people use vacuums, their staff has to go out and give them a free pass to come back for another day to get vacuum cleaning, but it's, they have to manage the facility appropriately. This is what you'll see from Highway 100, they'll come in off of Laton and then stack it and go through here and then into the car wash. They could do probably about at maximum 280 vehicles an hour if they had that kind of a volume. For architectural, unfortunately, the screen, we're going to do screen hopefully in the very near future, but it's kind of a red, it's a red color. They wanted it all red, and we've talked with them, and they've changed quite a bit, and we're quite happy with it. They're going to have brick down below here, grayish brick, and actually, the brick will go halfway up to here as well as in these areas here, so we'll still allow them to provide their signature red color, but also have it somewhat muted and still have it a nice-looking facility with glass, brick, metal panels, and corrugated metal bands around the top of the building here. The building will be about 24 feet tall at its highest peak, on the average, is about 18 feet tall. This would be the elevations that you see, this would be the elevation that you would see from driving down Highway 100. The plan commission has made a number of recommendations to the common council, most notably is to hold all action until the state approves the traffic impact study and that the DOT recommendations are accepted and approved. At a minimum, they're suggesting that Highway 100, there was one entrance that was going to be allowed to be only a right, out only an exit, but we'll wait for DOT's final ruling on that. Obviously, additional landscaping. We also asked them to reduce the width of their car lanes, I think they were at 14 feet. We wanted it 11 feet to allow for more landscaping, more greenery. I think the freeway is proposed, if they don't widen it, to have 11-foot lanes, so it's not uncommon to have 11-foot lane. As I mentioned, no curried in the street, and the architectural details will be provided in the plans. The plan commission has reviewed this project, has recommended approval. We have received no objections to date. If you have any additional questions, I, a representative of the order, would be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Stevel. Are there questions from the council? Alderman May.
Yeah, Mayor Devine. Though I had no participation in the study of this site, the company I work for did, and so that presents a conflict of interest. So due to a conflict of interest, I will not be able to participate in any debate or consideration of the proposal, and at the advisement of the city attorney, I can sit here and listen, but I will not be able to place an up or down vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Alderman Barzak.
John, I did send out an email. One of the concerns I have, and it's not so much with the car wash, it's a possible 24-hour convenience store coming in, and learning from experience having a 24-hour convenience store on Highway 100 in Theater, Truck, or Drive, it creates a massive, massive traffic problem on the weekends with a term commonly known as cruising. Should this convenience store come in there, this is going to be an absolute main draw for Highway 100 as red carpet used to be. If you went to the aerial view of the old red carpet, you'll notice that they put in volleyball courts, because the standard route would be to come down, lap them, and then go into red carpet and come around the other side of red carpet and exit back onto Highway 100. That didn't cause too much of an issue for the fire department, because the cars were exiting down further on Highway 100. In this particular case, they're going to come into the convenience store, which is going to be open 24/7, I'm going to assume, and they're going to stack up and lap them. And my belief, this is going to cause an absolute major problem for the fire station. And I did ask for those concerns to be addressed. I haven't heard anything that those concerns have been addressed, because it will be, they'll be stacked up from lap them into the convenience store, waiting to get back out onto the highway. Thank God, I hope it takes some pressure off the Speedway, because right now, that's all backed up. They're backed up into Highway 100, they're backed up into Theater, Truck, or Drive, they go down the side streets. Here, they're not going to have anywhere to go, they're going to be stuck on lap them, and it's going to be, it's going to be ugly. So I just want to know how you have addressed that situation.
We have not addressed that as of yet. We are working with, we have advised the potential prospect that may want to open a convenience gas station of that problem, and we still wait for them, how they're going to respond to that. That's a very valid point, but it will come up if and when they do present a proposal. Today, we're just looking at the traffic volumes. If everything happened, how bad would it be, and how do we manage it? And I think the point that you brought up is very valid, and we're going to have to take a very close look at how to deal with that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Mayor Devine. Alderman Michael.
One, two quick questions. Approximation on the taxable value for this and the number of jobs?
It'll have a cost of about $4 million, and I think they're going to have about 12 employees for at a time.
Okay, so that, we're assuming it's going to be a $4 million taxable value.
Pardon? It'll be less of a taxable value, because we were talking about acquisition, demolition, although how that imputes land value is another issue, and how the assessor assesses that.
I realize you're not the assessor. Their costs are going to be $4 million.
Yeah. I would guess it'd be more than $3 million, but that's another.
Yeah, that's the car wash, that's what we're talking about, the car wash.
Just the car wash.
Yes, okay, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Other person, Ranky.
My concern also is with the traffic-related problems. Do I understand this correctly, John, that there won't be any entrance to the car wash from Highway 100? It's only from Lapham there's going to be a drive?
That is correct.
Okay, is there an exit actually on Highway 100?
There may be a right turn only exit.
Is that, and correspondence, you might say, with the traffic, the stop sign now that is located there? That part I didn't understand. Or is it on the other side?
Here's, here's Highway 100, here's Lapham. There's going to be an exit here for people that get in line and then realize they left their wallet at home, or they don't want to wait that long, or whatever. They would be able to exit through here on a right turn basis only.
A right turn?
Yeah, at this time. We're still looking at that, whether to close it off totally or not.
We didn't get the results from the traffic study, though.
We have got the traffic study, we're still waiting, it's been submitted to DOT. DOT has advisors, they thought they would get back to us in about a week from now.
Okay, is there enough room, so there won't be stacking of cars out into Lapham?
That's why we have 70, the potential to have 70 vehicles optimally, now you'll probably never see that amount of stacking. We think typically maybe 24, maybe 48 at the worst, but that's a whole other issue. However, the ordinance as written today would prohibit them from having customers stacked on Lapham, and if they didn't go out there and take some management protocol to stop that or change that or tell people to go away, we could revoke their special use if they don't manage it correctly.
Because we do have that problem with another car wash down near Oklahoma.
Yes, we do.
The stacking, that creates somewhat of a problem.
And we could see why it's a good public policy not to allow stacking in our streets.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the members of the common council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience?
Could I, is the audience first, or?
Do you want to respond, or do you want to speak?
I'm just, I'm the owner of the car wash, Mike Clum, South 15 West 22095, Waukesha, Wisconsin, Woodbury Court. I wanted to address the traffic and the stacking to all your points. This car wash is not like any car wash in the area. This is an express car wash. We don't detail the cars, we don't stop them. Literally, once you pay your 30 seconds, you're on that rail, and another 90 seconds, you're out. So we can do up to 280 cars an hour, which is a lot different than what you're probably thinking. A lot of the gas stations take seven or eight minutes per car. I can actually get 20 cars out in that time. So in a sense, if you take the average gas station in a 24-hour period, they could only possibly wash 190 cars, where I could do that in less than an hour. So again, I have a site up in Waukesha, but you come, I can do 800 cars a day, and you would think I'm absolutely dead. That's just how fast everything moves, and you don't see a lot of cars in there. So to have the stacking room of 70, I obviously, I can almost guarantee I would never get out to the frontage road nonetheless, lap them. To address your concerns on the vacuums, could they, the reason I went with 28 to 30 vacuums is people love the free vacuums, but they are free, so if we ever do get backed up, I can say, hey, you're just going to have to keep going and come back. They're free, it's not going to cost you anything, and when you free up, you can zoom right back in. To your point, and then think of that, but maybe that right hand turn's not the right thing to do there, because you could have people just coming in and around and get out. But this way, I will have a gate controlling in and out of that vacuum, so that gate has to go up. You have to be a paying customer. So either if the cruisers want to come in there and want to pay $15 to sit in my vacuums, I guess, I don't think they would, but that would definitely stop them on my end.
Members of the audience, sit.
Thank you for indulging me. This is my first night here. I was here for something else, but I'm being entertained at least. One thing I have experienced before is on 43rd and Lincoln Avenue, there's a car wash that's recently been put up, and the drainage from the water dripping down of the newly washed cars is going onto the street, and because this, because this drainage from, you know, your car drip drying off, spring, summer, fall, or winter, it's more pronounced in the wintertime, that road on Lincoln Avenue between 42nd and 43rd Street is slickered and snot on shit. It's, and then they decided to put a diamond island in there, and I almost twice have put a beeline right for their red light. So whatever you're going to do, I just want to make a comment, that if you're going to have that right turn going southbound on Highway 100, or even wherever, on Laton, on Lapham too, make sure the drainage is going to be effective enough so that there's not going to be, you're not going to be called to have put more salty and special, you know, the city's going to have to come in and give it more attention so that the business can prosper, do whatever you want it to do. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience?
My name is John Becker, I am the owner of West Alice Car Wash, and I know that six months out of the year is our busy season. We do wash a lot of cars. Now you're proposing something to come up and wash twice as much cars than anybody else. You're going to have nothing but a traffic problem. Stacking, I've had a car wash on the north side for over 20 years. We had stacking of 50 cars in the lot. We were still a half a mile, almost to a mile down the road on busy days. It's just going to happen. You're going to have lines at car washes. With this car wash here, you're going to be out on Lapham during the winter. He's washing a lot of cars, but even at four cars per minute, which is ridiculous, you are going to have issues. You're going to have people not loading properly the conveyor, you're going to have people not exiting properly, they're going to have to slow it down, stop their line. That's what's going to happen. You have people coming out of the car wash, going around to the vacuum stations. You have 28 vacuum stations. People go to the car wash, they're going to vacuum their own car, they're going to spend about 15, 20 minutes vacuuming their car. They're going to have their kids there. People coming out of the car wash are going to sit and wait for an opening for the vacuum station. It's not going to happen. That's going to back everything back up to the car wash. You know, you talk about, okay, having somebody standing there and saying, hey, I'm sorry, you can't use my vacs, you're going to have to move on. With only four people working at that car wash and doing that kind of volume, I employ 22 people. We're a full-service car wash. Yeah, we get lined up, we might run a little slower than this, but we're moving them out pretty good. And I do put people at the entrances and exits of the businesses next to me to make sure that they're not blocking driveway. You know, we do get lined up. You know, this is just going to happen, and I just don't think that any other municipality would put a car wash of this caliber next to a would put a car wash of this caliber next to a tunnel car wash that's already there. You know, even if your deal, I've dealt with the International Car Wash Association for 35 years. They will help you with site planning, they will go over plans with you, and they always will recommend stay at least three-mile radius is generally accepted practice because of a traffic problem. Now you're going to have a gas station proposed there? I just see a lot of problems. You've got a fire station across the street. I don't think that my safety, if there's an accident or something happens to me, I'm going to wait to see if a fire engine or an ambulance can get out through traffic to get to Highway 100. There will be lines, and I bet you that line is going to be backed up on Highway 100, even at the volume. It takes volume to do volume. And if we have those, there's a certain formula during the winter for washing cars, and that's dry streets and sunshine. And it's not just weekends. It can be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays. You can't say, I'm going to wash this amount of cars on this day, and we're going to do this amount on weekends. It doesn't work that way. It's whatever day is a good car washing day. And that's what it is. And I just see, I see a lot of problems here with traffic.
Thank you.
That's it.
I'd like to address that a little bit. Obviously, there's, it's competition, and I get that. To go out and, again, Lapham, I've been operating car washes for over 20 years myself, and it has to be controlled, to your point. If I can't control it, then you'll pull my permit or my conditional use, I'm assuming. But that, you're talking, when we talk these numbers, this is worst-case scenario. I mean, if I had 100 people out there, that would be remarkable. But to his point, if I'm doing them three times as fast, then I'm taking some of the pressure off of him, and he won't be out on that road, so making it safer out right on Highway 100. I'm not on Highway 100, I'm on Lapham. So I think the community needs an express wash. Not everybody can afford to have a full detailed car wash, and I get that. So there's a lot of need for it, and it will be busy, but it will be controlled. You're more than happy to take a field trip over to Waukesha. I can show you how it works. And there was a misstatement on how many people. I will have a lot more than 12 employees. It'll be probably 20 to 25 with two shifts, but whatever it takes to control and maintain that traffic, it's in our best interest to do it at all times, to keep people safe, the public safe, and us safe. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on public hearing number three?
Noah Lee, 726 West Rogers Street. I just had two questions. One, and forgive me because I'm not 100% familiar with the intersection, is there a left-turn arrow at the intersection of Highway 100 in Lapham so that people...
It's a lighted, a traffic light.
Right. So is there a specific left-turn arrow there?
I believe there is.
Okay, good. So I think if you had that here, you would have a lot more people trying to turn on to Lapham off of Highway 100 to get into there, so I just want to make sure that was being considered. And the second thing was environmentally. So I don't know what requirements are for car washes. Obviously, there's a volume of water that is used, also a volume of detergents that are being put into the sanitary sewer. Could you just go over what the requirements are for that, so make sure that we're environmentally making sure we're not adding a lot of wastewater to our system, or, you know, bad detergents, things like that? Or maybe you want to be better to talk about that?
Two parts. One, environmentally, from the soil reclamation process, that's all controlled by DNR, and that'll be done in accordance with DNR standards. In terms of water usage, West Dallas is a, was a wet industrial city, so to speak. We have very high volumes of water capacity. In fact, across the street, it used to be a dairy, lots of water users. So we have huge volumes of water capacity to be able to use. And as for the return of the water, there's going to be a lot more stormwater going through, but they're also paid a lot of money for the water that they're using.
So I understand that, I guess...
They also have other techniques to be able to do reclaiming water and those kind of things.
Okay, that's good. As far as the detergents are used for the cleaning of the car, do we have any sort of ability to request or require more environmentally friendly options versus other ones when these sorts of businesses go into place, again, since we're doing such volume?
They'll also be collecting a lot of the waste on the site.
Okay.
That they don't want to put into stormwater, so there's trade-offs in there. There's the disposal process that they have to follow.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the members of the audience on our third public hearing?
I didn't even know about this. Can I tell them that? I'm just wondering why the gas station isn't on Highway 100 and the car wash is to the left here, and then the cars would come...
That was a market consideration. The owners of the property wanted to do it that way. It's a private sector decision.
The who?
A private sector decision. We can't tell them how to, what to put on land. We can only tell them how it must look.
Yeah, but it just seems logic to me.
Any other questions or comments on public hearing number three?
Mayor Devine, could I ask one more question, please?
Oh, I suppose.
Is this a private ownership, or is it a franchise?
It's...
Private ownership. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we will close public hearing number three, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number four.
Resolution relative to determination of special-use permit for All About Learning, a proposed daycare facility located at 11575 West Theodore Trecker Way. Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All About Learning is a daycare center. Because it's a daycare center, requires a special use, and that's the purpose of this hearing, is to evaluate terms and conditions that the city would allow this to take place in our community. They're going to have about 100 children at the site, ages infant to about five years. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 5:30 AM to 7:00 at night. 40 parking spaces are required, they have 42 provided. They have six facilities throughout the metro area, and they'll have about 20 employees at this site. All About Learning, this is the parking lot at Theodore Trecker Way, will have two floors of operation, they have two outdoor play areas. We've also asked them to move this particular play area back a little bit from the parking lot. And we're also asking them to put a four-sided enclosure around their dumpsters. A good reason that we don't allow curb stops to be on the public street is these always get kicked out into the driveway or into the sidewalk. They're going to fix those. Not to provide some additional landscaping around the monument sign, and there'll also be applied for another side permit to reface the side. The plan commission has reviewed this project, has recommended approval, and we received no objections to date. If you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the members of the audience? All right, this one was the easy one. We will close public hearing number four. We will go to item E, which is citizen participation. This is the chance for residents to address the council on any matters of interest to them. We ask that you keep your comments to approximately five minutes, and we keep this portion of our agenda to 30 minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Please give us your name and address.
You want me to talk?
You're up.
All right. My name is Violet Brown, and I live at 2160 South 86th Street, and I'm just sounding an alarm. Our First Amendment is under attack in our Constitution. We have some people, different groups, not assimilating into our culture. We're becoming like second-class citizens. And also, if the First Amendment is going to be disregarded, and it's going to turn into a hate speech, or some kind of a hate, I don't know what they're going to say, but anyway, we could be arrested or put in jail because we'd like to talk about the First Amendment, or say something about the First Amendment, and we won't be able to do it because it'll be outlawed. And I think it's very important that we think of our freedom, and think about what America means in our cities, in our schools, in our teachers. And I'm a little worried about that First Amendment. And if you could all read about that First Amendment, you'd realize it's very important to all of you and your children in America, in our city, West Dallas. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
Robert Crown, 2160 South 86, same subject. First Amendment, hate speech. I've been an activist a long time, dealt with all kinds of groups, homeless people, under bridges, I dealt with black people, Hispanics, Mexicans, you name it. Been to court with many of them, many of you have seen me in some of the court actions, whatever's going on. But it's getting bad lately when, when the plain, normal people, Christian-valued people speak up, and right away, it's hate speech, especially if it concerns, and here's the thing, gay, lesbian, transcendites, or whatever they want to call themselves people, soon as you say anything, hate speech. I'm surprised you don't come in here and start screaming at me right now. I mentioned them, that's hate speech. And I'm hearing it all the time, unfortunately, and I'm getting tired of it. And I'm getting to the point where I'm getting 83 the next month, and I can't do too much about it. But I wish I'd hear somebody, and I'm not going to criticize any aldermen or alderladies or whoever's here, but I'd wish I'd hear something coming out of the council, the city, certainly not the school board, they're so quiet, they're afraid of their own shadows, they never say nothing. But we need to put a stop to this, where the gay, lesbian, transcendites, whatever they want to call themselves, are always speaking up, criticism, everybody else. You've got the far-left Democrat parties, anybody's Democrats here, I feel sorry for you, but I can't help it. But you've got all of this big push, the push, all this agenda. Where are we going with our country and everybody? I'm sick of running around to all these meetings, I meet with many people, with things going around the city, I get involved in many court things going on. With all of this, it's getting horrible that you can't, free speech is no more. There is no more free speech. It's very, very getting restrictive of what you say. If you're not a lefty, I use that term, lefty Democrats, because that's where a lot of it comes from, sorry if it, if it fits yourself, can't help it, but that's where it's coming from. It's getting harder and harder to say anything without getting criticized. And as long as my wife was coming, bringing this up, I wanted to mention it, and I wish that somebody here would once bring it up. I know you guys sit here, the only guy ever says anything is poor Vince over here, every time he holds his mouth, you bang the hammer at him, but at least he tries. But I'd like to hear something out of the city, and the mayor's smiling too, anybody here who wants to say anything about it. You know, we got free speech, let's promote it. Let's urge people to speak up about issues. Let's not be afraid, let's not hide under the tables, you know? And if some gays, lesbians, or whoever wants to confront me, I've, I've met with all the people from many, many times with the people that had Queer Nation, and you name the people, talked to them, met with them, you know, and I know all about them, and how they think and stuff. And, but it's getting terrible that if you say anything, hate speech, you know, and they're getting more and more, they're passing laws about it. And I've been up on some of these laws, I know, I won't get into all of that tonight, I'm sure you ain't got time for it, but it's getting worse and worse that you can't say anything anymore about anybody or anything, you know? So I'm thankful I'm allowed to speak here, and nobody comes and drags me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. Item F on our agendas lists our standing committees. They will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on your agendas on page two. Item G, the mayor's report. I just have a couple of things. A couple of weeks ago, we had a homeowners resource fair here at City Hall, and we had local businesses and many city departments here that were really doing kind of an open house on resources that were available to homeowners in the community. And I just want to take a minute to thank all the staff that put that on, as well as all the businesses that partnered to make that happen. It was really successful. It was actually snowing, and we were worried people weren't going to venture out in the snow, but being hardy Wisconsin nights that we are, they did. So getting off of snow, the spring cleanup that was rescheduled due to the snow is coming up. The new date is Saturday, May 5. It is going to be at 9:00 AM at the police substation. Again, you will have to sign a waiver. People under 18 need to be accompanied by an adult or a guardian, and they will be serving pizza at around 11:00, 11:30 for all the volunteers when they come back after cleaning up all the lovely stuff that got buried under that said snow over the course of the winter. And lastly, last night, Little League season opened up, and the mounds were graced by two outstanding pitching arms. That would be Alderman Barzak and myself. I think he topped out at about 21 miles an hour and threw wide left, and I topped out at about 18, but I think I threw a strike. So it was very fun to see that, getting out there and seeing all the kids stepping out. For some reason, I was not allowed to throw the pitch out on Barzak Field. I had to go up to Shoff. I don't know why that was, but it was a fun event, and it's always fun to see the kids out starting out baseball, especially when the weather's nice. So that concludes the mayor's report. Do we have any reports from the alderpersons this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigle.
Just for a reminder for everyone that travels through our city, the National Avenue reconstruction project starts in the next few days. So this is a complete reconstruction of National Avenue between 70th and 76th Street. So that'll be, and it's, so it's sewer and water and a whole new road. So the whole road will be dug up, and it's going to extend into November. So detours are posted, there's a website, there's a nice video, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. This is actually a state project, and the streets do. The library will remain open. Library access, 75th Street, one block of 75th Street just north of National will be turned temporarily into a two-way street, and there will always be cross-traffic on National to get to the library. The fire department's working it out, the health department's working it out, the businesses on the street are going to work it out as best as they can. But this is what we have to deal with when you do a complete reconstruction of a road. I mean, we had a public hearing earlier tonight where people are upset about having to pay for a road repair, but their street's going to be open every day. This is going to be into November, okay? So that's what happens with a complete road reconstruction. There was a pre-construction meeting here last night, I think it was fairly well-attended. Engineer Pete Daniels was there, a bunch of our staff was there. People had some interesting questions, but I think at least the people on that street are ready for it. It's just that everybody else who drives down National Avenue is going to be stunned when they come to that, so. Also, we had a dog park site visit meeting over the weekend on Saturday, and Alderman Rolt was there with Steve Share from our staff and a couple of the interested volunteers. We did go to the two leading, well, the two locations. One is kind of behind the Little League field, out towards the highway, behind Reservoir Park, west of Reservoir Park. And the other site is east of Hale High School, south of the police department. Both sites have their pluses and minuses, no final decisions have been made. I do know that of the people who've made to both sites, I think the consensus was the westernmost location, the one behind Hale and the police station is leading, but again, no decision's been made. We're trying to eventually get both sites open, but there'll be funding issues and all that, so. I do believe there's a tentative meeting scheduled for next Monday. I have not seen an email... I have not seen an email about it yet. I imagine Steve Share is listening to me right now, thinking about an email he should have, was going to send out today. You can either reach out to me later this week. Steve Share is upstairs in our Department of Development, or the mayor's here every day too. I'm sure he's on top of it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other reports from the older people?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council regular meeting of April 17, 2018. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any adjustments or alterations or changes to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move to item J, I'll ask for a motion to refer items six, seven, and eight to the city attorney.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman May and a second by Alderman Barzac. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We have no standing committee reports under item K.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by older person Ranky. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.
[applause]